I would like to call the Lake Mills City Council meeting for December 4th, 2018, to order, and would like to ask everyone to join us in the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call roll?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
And Mr. Fields previously informed staff that he be unavailable this evening.
Okay, then we will continue with item number three, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of November 20th, 2018. Is there a motion?
Some will.
Second? To approve?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
To approve, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, moving on to item number four, correspondence. Does anyone have correspondence that they wish to share with the council?
It's very quiet, nobody contacted me.
Everybody's busy with Christmas.
Shopping, yeah.
Shopping, hopefully in Lake Mills, right? Okay, well, moving on then to number five, questions and public comment. Get my little thing here. Okay. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium before you leave the podium. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council tonight? If you're on another item on the agenda, you can speak at that item, which I think most of our people are connected with specific items, correct? Yes? Okay. Seeing no one at the podium, we'll close public comment. Move to city manager's report. Steve?
Provided you with three reports, one on deck capacity, one on Sandy Beach charges, and one on staffing summary for the fire department. Are there any questions on that? You read it all completely? Good.
On the staffing study, who is the author of that? It doesn't say.
It's Todd.
Okay, should probably include that.
Okay. I think he was a little surprised that it already showed up there as a, seeing it was still a draft, but I wanted to get it out.
He probably was surprised.
I heard a rumor today, and I wanted to check out and see if it was true. I heard the newspaper sold.
Yeah, really? Do we know any more than that?
I do not.
See this Thursday's paper. This is the Daily Union today.
I could.
Said to see this Thursday's paper.
Oh, okay.
It's in the Daily Union.
Do you still have a job? Yay. Okay, well, that's good news that you have a job. Okay, well, we'll look forward to finding out what's happening in the press area. Okay. Thanks for enlightening the rest of us.
The, I'd like to get the branding stuff moving again because we're on schedule to have that contract awarded for the water tower painting this summer.
Oh, yes.
So, I've talked to Erin, and she's starting to prepare for something in January. So, I might want to think about a time in January we can do that. They still have not awarded the South Main Street contract.
Really?
Yeah.
Whoa.
Now, the comments were that they'd had an issue with some computer stuff and the webpage where they put all their documents off for bid was having issues. And in fact, we got an email today that said the Mulberry Street bid had been delayed by a week. So, it won't go out, in fact, two weeks, it won't go out to bid until December 18th. No, December 11th, and it won't be opened until January 18th. So, they, apparently it had some issues and they were trying to catch up. So, maybe we'll find out what's going on with that here shortly. Obviously, the Mulberry Street was on the December 4th one, which was today, which is now delayed until next Tuesday, so that'll be a week behind. We send out our November lead service lateral reports, but we're also now at the point where we're gonna talk at the public works board about the Kenosha-style program for funding replacement of private lead service laterals, because that'll have to be incorporated into any new rate change that would be proposed. Radium, the well has been cleaned, flushed, and we're getting ready to do our new Packer testing and see what the results are. We have 100 electric AMI meters in and 400 water. We are almost complete with cross-connection requirements, which we have to have done by the end of December for the DNR. Our corrosion control testing, hopefully, will start sometime after Friday. The DNR is in Friday morning to review our equipment, which we manufactured and are running now.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we gonna be able to make the end of the month deadline for cross-connections?
Let's put it this way, we're a lot closer with that than we were with the lead lateral. We have a couple that we might be behind, but not like we were with the lead service laterals. Lead service laterals, we're getting pretty close now. I imagine that the vast majority of them will be done by the end of January, and then we just have some tough cleanup ones and some people who won't open their door and may need some encouraging from an attorney.
He didn't say what attorney.
We held our public hearing today with the Public Service Commission for the new water rate. That was done today. Betsy, myself, and Paul. There are some water tower issues, but the main one for you is gonna be making sure that we get, we've bid, we set up the bid to have a four-color painting on the water tower, and hopefully, we won't need that much, but we set it up that way, so if we can finish out this branding issue, we can figure that out. That's one of the key ones. The other one is a new railing around the top. We didn't put one on originally, but they think it'd be safer if we had one on now for some issues we have to deal with on top of the tower regularly.
Can I ask what kind of issues?
I can't tell you that I know for sure, but apparently, you have to go up there every once in a while and check on the icing and the, and some other conditions up there. And the existing antennas, when we built the original one, we had a special bar put into the, the tower, set up to handle eight antennas, I think. And those antennas get in the way of that work that needs to be done, so they were thinking about putting up the railing, putting the antennas on the railing, and then having a flat area where they could get out and work on rather than around those bars.
We aren't having any kind of corrosion problems, are we?
Not significant, but all water towers corrode. I mean, that's why you inspect them and paint them every so many years, and eventually, we'll have to come in and do like we did on well number four, where we went into that tank and rewelded some spots and put in some additional lining in the inside and that type of stuff. Eventually, we'll have to replace it. Hopefully, that's way down the road. Union negotiations with WPPA, we've been holding those. I think we've had the last one. I think we have a proposal that's pretty close to in place, so you might see that at the December meeting, if not, surely, the January one. I think the Brookstone plat is on tonight, so I don't think we need too much there. Health insurance is still rolling along. Everybody's getting their cards and their HSA documents. Arlac has signed their contract, and they have, they did have a bid. I think they might change.
That sounds like it's gonna be the same one.
Oh, is it?
They kinda figured it out today.
Okay, good.
You think it'll be possible to get their rough fix?
They're optimistic.
We're looking at changing our utility billing, looking at contracting it out rather than doing it internally.
Really?
So, Paul's investigating that. Other than that, that's all I got. Are there any questions?
Just a reminder that there won't be a meeting the first Tuesday in January because it's New Year's Day, right?
And I will have traveled all night long from Orlando from a soccer tournament, so I don't think I'll come anyways.
Okay, we would, we will, we will give you freedom from trying to do that, but for the public and anyone else who might be involved somehow, so, you know, I think it's time to get rid of November on the calendar here. There, now I'm to December, back where we need to be. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Steve before we move on? Okay, seeing none? All right, let's go to item number seven, acceptance of minutes of the planning commission for October 23rd, 2018, the library board for October 15th, 2018, the police and fire commission for October 4th, 2018, and for the police and fire commission for October 18th, 2018, and for November 7th, 2018. And we also have the senior advisory board, October 11th, 2018. These minutes will be placed on file. Takes us to item eight, council business miscellaneous licenses. Would you please read those persons' names?
We have two tavern operators license applications, one for Samuel Fuer and one for Gwendolyn Larson.
Okay. Do I have anyone who wishes to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, to approve those licenses?
Yep.
And there's no discussion on that item, so call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thank you. And item B, we have a presentation tonight from John's disposal on bulk pickup, and we want to thank you for coming tonight. I'll let you introduce yourself and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm Brian Youngich, president of John's Disposal, and here to talk about the bulk, the new bulk pickup program that we've proposed. We've had a few problems with the old bulk pickup. Some things you see, there's unruly piles out there. It's a little bit of a problem that residents have to always wait for that, is it the third Monday of the month here, I think? The third Monday of the month.
Yeah.
You know, so like if you clean out your garage on the fourth Monday, you're a little bit in trouble. And then, we have a problem that, especially like in the winter months, we're driving around looking for piles, and sometimes, people just have small items out, and so we get called back because we weren't sure. We have sometimes where things are closer to, it's, we're not sure if it's supposed to go or not. We have that issue, and our guys are always leaving it in order to not take something that they're not supposed to, because then, we have to return it if we take something. So, we have those type of problems. So, the solution that we've done now is what is what we call call-in bulk. So, what hap, what the, the residents have to call us and arrange for a bulk pickup. And it's the same program that you have now, you can, same things are included. The residents get 12 pickups, they get one per month, the same as they have now, but our trucks will be coming through town in the busy times of the year, every week, for sure, so they call, and we're gonna be there within seven days. In the winter, it could go down to maybe only twice a month if we, depending on the call volume that we have. So, and what's helped us, enabled us to do that is that we have better software now. You know, we've had it, we've been doing this for quite a few years, but now, we have a better, in different communities, but we have better software where we track it so we know which customers is, and then it's mapping, so it's efficient for our trucks to just go right to these stops and get them, which I think is also an advantage for the city, that we don't every month have trucks just driving, extra trucks driving every street in the city looking for this stuff and turning around, and it's so, this way, we just go directly to the people that called, and we take, you know, what, what they've arranged for us to take. It also helps with, sometimes you see there's unruly piles. We try to, you know, clean up the city. We have, you know, neighborhood pride, we take things that are really not included, that we're not supposed to be taking. So, this allows us to, you know, our drivers can take a picture of that, we'll still clean it up, but then, the next time the people call us, they, hey, buddy, you know, you're really, that needs to be cut up, or this needs to be put in bags or cans, or put in the way that it's supposed to be. I'm sure you've seen some of those unruly piles and things, but we've kind of encouraged our guys to just clean it up and, you know, to take care of it. But we plan to continue to do that, but we will have the name and phone number of the people that, you know, so the next time they call, we will log that in their software. So, that's about all I can tell you about it. The one thing we will do, oh, yeah, the one thing we will do is, we plan to start this first of January, and at least the first two months, we'll, we're just gonna go through on that third Monday, and then we'll leave notices for everybody that, that didn't call, so that, you know, so we'll leave notices for them, and we'll have a little bit of a grace period. But the worst case is, is that, you know, come summer, people aren't gonna know about this, and then they're gonna call, and they're gonna say, okay, we'll come and get it, but you gotta call after this. So, that is our intention. Any questions?
Yeah, you've indicated you've done this in other cities.
Yes.
How's it worked out?
It's been real successful, and the one thing I can tell you is, you know, we have still a small call center, small office, I mean, we have a half a dozen girls that answer the phone, and the first time that somebody calls, it takes a little bit, they get set up, you know, in the, but the second time they call, they just tell us their name or address, and it finds them, and okay. And my staff says it's always a pleasant call, because we schedule it, it's, there's no extra charge, and it doesn't seem like it's really a problem. And then, we really haven't, we've had very little, I mean, I think it's more successful than what we do now, because now, it seems like every month, there is something that we have to go back for. Somebody calls, and either our guy wasn't sure, or he didn't see, I don't know what might have happened, but this way, when we, when they call and arrange it, I mean, it's a work order through our, it's pretty much, it's way up over 99%, you know, accurate that they're gonna call, and we're gonna come, and we tell them we're gonna come, and we're gonna take it.
How long does it, I assume it takes at least two months or more for the citizenry who do call and make the appointment?
Yeah, it takes a couple months, and we're at least gonna, for sure, do it the first two months. The good thing, there's a lower, you know, call volume the first couple months anyway. You know, there's just, there, I mean, there's just less, it's almost February, it's almost like something you might not even should have a bulk pickup. That's part of, you know, you're driving through the whole city looking for this stuff, and there's not typically. People go kind of dormant in February.
Then it comes.
Yeah. If I can pass this out, is that all right? This is, I think we're gonna change it up. It's a draft of, of a notice that we give people when they do it wrong, and it has the information on there.
And I wrote draft on it, and I don't, I don't know if this is exactly, we were kind of changing it a little bit, but this is, the intention was we would leave this for somebody that, you know, just didn't call. And then, it says, you know, courtesy pickup, but it also, below, explains what, what's
I have a question, and maybe I've missed it because I scanned this very quickly. It does, I don't see anything mentioning the televisions, and I know we repeatedly have people who put out TVs.
Yeah.
Do you, will you pick them up for a charge?
For a charge, we will, yeah.
Do you know what the charge is?
It's forty, it's just over $40.
Okay, so, and how do they pay that?
Credit card, like, they'll call, like, they call, and they said they had one, then we would, we could, we would take credit card for that.
Okay, so, could that be put on this sheet?
Yes.
Because I know a lot of people just...
Information on electronics, yes.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
Is that the only one that is special like that?
What about computers?
It would be electronics. I wouldn't just put TVs. We would do electronics and put a little something about all the things that are, right, that are household electronics.
So, computers would fall into that category, too?
Right.
Anything else off the top of your head that falls into that category?
It would be, you know, anything to do with the, you know, like, you know, a DVD player, you know, and of course, all the computers.
Entertainment.
Entertainment stuff, right. Any of those electronics for, for entertainment are in there. And then, some of that, the TV, like a tube TV, is the, is the forty, I think it's $42, but I'm not sure exactly, is the charge. Now, some of the other stuff will take multiple items for the $40, but the TVs are the big, that's the big expensive thing to get rid of. Yeah, it's the TVs. And then, I just added a little, a little thing on here about recycling, and if people ask about recycling, the biggest problem, my brother and I have a disagreement. My, my point is it's, it's unflattened cardboard boxes, and his biggest problem is plastic bags that are in the garbage, because he runs the recycling facility, and I'm more like the drivers and the collection crews, which the boxes that overfills car, like, a lot of times, the people, you see carts that are overfilled and stuff's in the ground. I think nine times out of 10, you go there, and there's like some boxes that are not flattened inside, and then others, you know, so that's a big problem for us with collection. And we can get problems with getting loads, they really want high quality now. Well, if a box has other stuff in it, or if it, you know, then it smashes, and then that other stuff ends up in the bale, and we can get downgraded or rejections for that. His biggest problem is plastic film, because in our plants, when we separate the paper and the cardboard from the bottles and cans, there's like a lot of shafts that turn, and the bottles and cans fall through and roll down, and the paper runs up over the top. Well, there's so many, like Walmart bags in there that wrap around the shafts, and pretty soon, they don't work anymore. And all the stuff, like, it runs up together, and so, like, at break time, we have guys that have to get in there, and they have to cut all of those plastic bags off the shafts, so that, any like bread bags, that, that's like a nightmare for him. So, those are our two big things. And then, like, for Christmas, I mean, we can recycle wrapping paper, but it's like, you kind of need to keep the wrapping paper separate from all the ribbons and the foil, and all the plastic stuff needs to go in the garbage, the plastic wrap, and, you know, that stuff goes, but the wrapping paper and all those boxes, we can recycle those. And that seems like, I guess, and people should still recycle at Christmas, right? Or, I don't know, it seems like that really falls down at Christmas.
You indicated in the materials, we got the fact that a lot of the waste and so on went to China, and with the continuing relation problems that we have with China right now. What's the industry looking at for the future?
I think the future's looking bright, and what's happening is, if you think about it, I heard that, that's the amount of boxes that are needed, and they need the feedstock to make boxes, and we, I think I heard that of retail, 10% now is e-commerce, 90% is brick and mortar, which strikes me as being really low. Like, that's gonna go up. So, like, every year, there's more cardboard boxes that need to be made. And they're, what they're doing now is they're, the new thing they're trying to do, the harder thing almost to get rid of is the paper, the mixed paper, which we get more of in the recycling than we do the cardboard. But there's a, Green Bay Packaging is putting on a, and Green Bay is putting on a $500 million edition, like a whole new mill almost, that's gonna make cardboard boxes out of paper. And there's already one of those plants, Pratt Industries has one in Indiana, and they're building another one in Ohio, and I think SCA Tissue in Manasha is gearing up for that. So, what we're, I think it's gonna be like back to, if you remember, years and years ago, the boxes that came from China, they had a yellow tint to them, and you could almost like stick your finger right through the side of them, they were like not as good a box. Well, now, China, this is really nothing to do with the, the trade talks. This started last fall, it was more like an EPA thing, and they are just demanding higher quality paper. They don't want any garbage, they don't have good landfills, and they're buying like stuff from like Quad Graphics cutoff stuff, they're not like buying things that come through, like, from cities, because it's not as perfect and pure. They are buying the pure stuff, and they're buying pulp and the highest grade stuff, and they're paying a fortune for it. So, the boxes coming out of there now are like really good. And here in the U.S. now, but if you think about it, the box we make is the one like Pratt, they, they make it Indiana, and then it goes to Beloit, and then their biggest customer is Pleasant Prairie, Amazon. So, now, they need the box that the other box already goes in, so the outer box might not be as good, I don't know, unless they're, I don't know how good they're gonna be, but it might not be as, but it, does it need to be as good, maybe, as what, because it's two boxes now, right? Everything that's shipped to your house from Amazon, it's already in a box. So, that's kind of what we're seeing happening, but it's, it's double boxes. I mean, you buy something that's in another box. So, I think the future is of, and probably, almost 70% of what comes out of Lake Mills is paper, cardboard, of the recycling. So, it's a big part of it, and we've had terrible problem in 2018 getting rid of it. I mean, it's just, it's just been a nightmare. But now, just recently, we're working with the local mills with contracts, so we can get rid of your stuff, it's probably gonna stay right here in Wisconsin now.
What about recycling plastics?
Plastics is pretty good. I mean, plastic, plastic bottles has always been good, and it's still good. The number ones and the number twos, and the number ones are water bottles, soda bottles, that's a good market for that, and the number twos are milk jugs and like detergent bottles, and those are good. The three through seven, the rest of it, not so good. But I think the number ones and twos are close to 90% of the plastic, so we're having difficulty with 10% of the volume.
Do you, is, I haven't seen your recycling plants, but is it a lot of hand labor to take in?
It's quite a bit, and, but now, that's the thing that we'll probably be adding is, is they're, they're doing more and more optical sorters, like, we already have optical sorter that, it uses like, it's almost like optic technology, and then it uses air jets, it times it, and it knows the difference between, between different types of bottles, like, you can just pick off just the number one bottles, or just the number twos, or cans, or, well, cans, we use magnets or, or eddy current to get the cans off. We, the glass comes out all by itself, the cardboard pretty much comes out all by itself, but you need like a guy on it to edit, because if somebody has like a piece, a little piece of plywood that's the size of a box, it goes right with the cardboard, and then we get in trouble. So, somebody has to like pick that out. The paper needs a fair amount of editing, so the paper needs, there's a fair amount of other stuff that runs with the paper, that guys have to pick that out of there by hand. But they're starting to use these optics to sort that, too, so that's coming, as it's getting more and more difficult to man our lines, to staff our lines, it's very difficult.
Do you want the cans delabeled?
Oh, no, no. The can, that's no problem at all. The cans go right to the foundry, and they, it's really hot, and it burns anything off that...
Okay, so just put the can in the recycling bin?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, same with bottles?
Yeah.
Which we don't normally take the labels off of bottles anyway.
Right, for your own good, typically, you like stuff to be rinsed out and cleaned, or, you know, it gets kind of disgusting. But the big thing is that cardboard boxes, I mean, it's, it's an epidemic. I mean, it's a big problem that people don't flatten their, their boxes. It's just a really, it's a really big problem for us, and I think it's a, it's almost like a life lesson. It's like when you just throw all the boxes... And I think it's a, it's almost like a life lesson, it's like when you just throw all the boxes in the garage and then the dad has to go out there and flatten them. I say, if everybody would just, when you got a box, cut it down and flatten and stack it, it just makes life easier for everybody, you know. But when there's a, isn't that in everything you do, if you just flatten it right away, you know, you save a whole pile of boxes for later, it's ugly. And then it like doesn't happen and, and often, like I said, when we see a problem, and I, when I see a problem with somebody's house where there's not fitting and overfilled carts. It is usually because they're, they're just trying to like stuff a box in there without actually taking the time to flatten it, cut it, put it in the recycling. And usually there's one of those boxes in the garbage or two and the recycling, it's a big problem.
On the bulk pickup, the changes, it says on here that two to four times a month, depending on call volume, you're, you're gonna do the pickup. If somebody calls in and they put their stuff out, how long is it going to be out on the curb before you're picking it up?
Well, if we do it four times a month, that's every week. So, you, you know, and we set the, we set the day before the week starts. So, a week before, we know what day it's gonna be, so that when residents call, we say, alright, this is the day we're gonna do it. So, they're gonna call us and then it's gonna be, most of the year, it's gonna be within seven days. But in the, in the winter, I mean, it might go ten or fourteen days. So, we're hoping eventually that people call us before they put it out there and say, hey, well, when can we schedule this? You know, I don't, I don't think you want, and you have an ordinance, I believe, where people can't just, so, it should kinda help to clean up the, the city a little bit.
Yeah, we'll have to make changes to the ordinance because my recollection is for bulk pickup, you could start putting it out on Saturday before the Monday?
There's a date listed, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to be able to, that, that's an advantage that we have too, is they're on the phone with us. And if it's like a holiday or there's something going on, or even certain times of the year, we're just really low on staff. And then we, we, we need the ability to pick a, a different day to do that, that helps us to staff the whole thing. So, it won't necessarily just all be on Monday. That's important that we just have that discussion too.
So, at some point, maybe you and Dan can put your heads together as to what would make sense for that ordinance change?
Yeah, I can, if, if you can send that to me, I left you my card there.
Yeah, that'll be a challenge, is to try to have a one-size-fits-all when, when we're gonna have people at different times of the month putting it out there. But I'm sure that it could be wordsmithed.
And we can, at first, we can, if, if you guys wanna know, you know, I can set you up with whoever at, in our office is gonna know that you can have a contact, alright, you know, if it starts, and we'll, we'll work with you if it's a problem. Like, and if, and if you see it like, oh, boy, and there's all kinds of these, you can call us and say, hey, we need to go through and clean them up. And we'll do that, especially at first, you know, we'll, we'll come through, I, at any time, if there's a problem. Uh, but we really like those people to call because then we get them in our system. If we just clean them up, we leave them the note, well, do they read the note, you know, I, we, we, what we do is we put those in a plastic hanger and we put it on their garbage cart on the handle as well, as how we leave the, it's like a door hanger thing.
A lot of people put things out when they move, which is often at the end of the month. So, do you often schedule a pickup at the end of the month?
Like in the summer, every week, we'll be coming through. We'll, we're gonna send a truck here for, so, instead of now, you send multiple trucks and we got a lot hours all in one day, we're, we're spreading that out through the whole month. So, you send one guy, comes down here for, you know, three or four hours, depending on the, the time of the, of the year, how many calls we get. And I, I think that's a big advantage, because otherwise, what were they supposed to do before? If it's the third Monday and all the move outs are the, are the end of the month, I mean, what were they supposed to do?
Right.
Now, they call us and they say, hey, we're, you know, and then we can do it somewhere right around there, you know, when they call, within the seven day, I think that's a big advantage.
I think so too.
And, and it seems like nowadays, in the past, I don't know, but now, it seems like a lot of people have a phone really close. Like, it's not that hard to call.
Yes, it's changed.
And like I said, it's an easy call, and with our office, pretty much whoever answers the phone, you don't go through all, push the button to go here or there or whatever, whoever answers the phone will take care of it for them. So, it, you know, it's, and it's a pretty quick, easy call, especially the second time they've called them up, once they're set up.
Do you see a online or website version of being able to schedule a pickup in the future?
Um, you know, we're, it's something we're, we're thinking about big time. It's, we really like to talk to people, I mean, and it's a quick, easy call. So, the reason, especially when there's problems or what do you have out, you know, you, because it, it's probably, it would, would scare me is it's a little bit like what you can say on Twitter, you know, you just say, okay. See, we'll see if they take it, you know, where when they're on the phone, it does, we, because we kinda talk them through it a little bit. So, maybe after, I would think it, maybe after a number of years when everybody's used to it, it could, I can see where that's kinda going that way. And then you'd have to, there would be a big thing they could read about what we take, what we don't take, and how we get a hold of them if there's a problem. I, I think it's gonna happen, but I, I think it's might not be real soon. But I do think it will happen.
We can still use cardboard boxes without flattening them to put things in for heavy pickup, can't we?
It, it's really better if you, if you don't, it's really better if you flatten the boxes and you put...
But what, if you got a lot of little things?
That should go in a bag or a can.
Okay.
Or, or in your cart, you know, in the brown cart. It really, or a box, I mean, you know, a box is, it needs to be recycled. So, you do see some people stuffing, you know, other boxes in the box, but we prefer that you just flatten them.
So, in other words, if you take them out of the box and they're small items, having them loose in the container is fine?
It's better, and running through our equipment, it's better if they're loose, it really is. And then they scoop up other stuff, they get in a truck and then other things get in there. And we don't want plastic bottles or cans getting compacted in a truck inside of a box either. So, it's just really best if they're just all flattened.
Now, for the recycling, that's only one and two for plastics, right?
Well, I think you could put them all in there now, but all we're saving is the one and twos. But the other ones do come back, they kinda come and, they, they, honestly, they come and go. And then what we've had problems with is they'll come back, the mixed plastics, like the three through sevens. And then we'll sell them to somebody and like they're just like harvesting the fours out of there and they're landfilling all the rest of it, you know. So, it's, uh, but I, I think we want any, any bottles and containers for people to put them in the recycling. And we, I think the future, I'd say in the last, you know, in the last ten years, we've, we've saved them more than we haven't. We've been able to sell and market them more often than we don't. But it's not, it's not being honest to say, oh, yeah, we always do, so, and it's like, I just don't think you wanna do, it's, and we're set up to sort them out. We don't take, they just kinda run off the end, we just don't pick them if we don't, it doesn't hurt us if they're in there.
Okay, but keep the plastic bags in the trash?
The bags and the bread bags and the, any film, any Saran Wrap, anything, oh, anything...
What about aluminum foil?
Aluminum foil, I used to always tell people to save it, but they want that in the garbage now, we, we, they do, not the, it doesn't like melt right with the cans. And it's a problem, and we get like deducted if we have too much, it's like a, if, if we don't have too much in there, we get paid for it. But if there's too much, then you get like this, this deduction thing, you know. So, if you put a little bit, I don't know, they don't want it, the people that, they do not want it. Because it doesn't melt right, it like vaporizes or something, I don't know.
Okay.
What, what about, like in the bakery, they've got these plastic containers for...
The big bubble things that go over the top?
Well, it's like, or restaurants where they put the leftovers in.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a...
Well, for sure, the styrofoam clam shells, and then even those, those, those black ones, we can't save those, no, those can go in the garbage.
Well, what if they're clear plastic?
I think just the bottles we want, so the, the clear bubbles, we can't sell those. We get a lot of them in there and it doesn't really hurt us, but we prefer them in the garbage, because we're not saving them.
A lot of those are a number five?
Yeah, and we're, we're not, we're not able to sell them.
So, throw those in the garbage?
You know, and the one thing I would tell you, like, yes, put them in the garbage. If like, if like you were at the factory where they made new ones and you had a whole semi-load of them and you could grind them up, I know you could sell them. But the problem that we have is it's mixed with everything else and there's just really not a good mechanism for us to sort them and to save them. So, almost, but, but again, almost everything that's in the garbage truck is recyclable. If you did composting, there's, there's very, so, the, these programs, this single-stream residential program is what's practical and efficient for us to do. And I think it's a pretty, I think it's pretty effective, I mean, it's literally half what goes in the landfill compared to what, you know, would've been there like, say, back in the seventies when you just threw everything in there. We're, we're saving at least half what we used to put in the landfill.
So, these notices are going on every customer's...
These will be the, the ones that put it out that didn't, you know, that didn't call in and put it out.
So, how do you plan on informing customers that do not put out the heavy or the bulk pickup that...
Well, is there some way we can do that through the city or is there a...
I would think that this would probably need to go on every single garbage can, so everybody's aware of it. So, say if somebody doesn't put it out the first or the third Monday of the month, then they wait to the next third and they don't call in?
We, like, we, we do not have a good mechanism to attach these to every can. I mean, we, we, maybe we can get involved with some type of, I don't know, I, a lot of times they do, your property tax bills are already out or, it's too late for that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at the utility bill.
Oh, in a utility bill?
January or February.
Okay.
So, by March, they should be notified.
They should get, right.
And it'll be on our website and I think we'll link it to...
Okay.
And our newspaper person will make it, something in the paper for us.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
And we have that grace period where we'll be going through and leaving them. But again, in January, February, there's not a lot out anyway, well, January.
Yeah.
The Christmas stuff.
After Christmas, post-Christmas.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. We really, I think, I know I found it helpful for you to come, and I know it's an extra night for you, isn't it?
Oh, no, I, I'm happy to come, so, and is the service been going well? Have you had complaints you're dealing with, or is everything pretty quiet or nothing's making it to the city council members at least?
You're not high up on the list of complaints.
And they do have your number if they got a problem, they know how to get ahold of you?
Oh, yes, yes.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you, this is a big, you know, we're one of the few small companies left in this industry, so, Lake Mills is a big account for us. So, we do appreciate this and it, it's a big deal. And I think this is something that it's gonna, it's a little bit of a change, it takes a little getting through, but I do think it's beneficial for both of us. I think it's better for your residents and it's better for us and it's better for the city, that our trucks aren't just tearing around every month looking for this stuff, you know? So, I think overall, it's a benefit for all of us, so, thank you.
I think it's especially a benefit for people who don't live on a big street.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, you know, a small street might get missed not intentionally.
And not having to wait, like you said, these people that, they move out and then they're, it's just, it didn't work good, so, they can call and schedule, thank you.
So, now, let me see here. Okay, that takes care of item B. Now, we move on to item C, discussion and decision on the John's disposal contract amendment. All right, let's, my computer went to sleep, so, we weren't moving fast enough here, so, let's see. Okay. Would you read the motion, please?
City Council motion eighteen dash twelve dash one dash one, authorizing the city manager to sign a contract amendment.
Okay, could we get a motion in a second so we can discuss it?
I'll move motion eighteen dash twelve dash one dash one.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on the motion in front of us.
I checked with the Public Works Board, powers and duties in the ordinance. And technically, any changes to John's disposal or whoever's doing our garbage and recycling, any changes to the contract are supposed to go to the Public Works Board first for recommendation. Would this be something that we could table until next meeting and still be timely?
Yes, we just move it to the eighteen.
Then I recommend that we table this. I move that we table it.
I'll second that.
Motion to table is not debatable, I don't believe, is it?
No.
Okay, so, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
With the intent to send it to Public Works Board. So, that'll be on their next agenda. And then it'll come back to us. Okay. All right, well, moving on then. And let's see. Item D. Oh, okay. I actually went to D, didn't I? So, um, actually, they're kinda connected, so. E, discussion decision on request from the Lake...
We should have formal action on that, on the, on the resolution, if you wanna table that as well perhaps?
Um, they're not the same.
They're not the same.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, you can take action on resolution eighteen.
Okay, so, let's, hold on, hold on here. So, motion eighteen twelve one one is tabled.
Right, correct.
Okay, so, let me go back and get the other one, hold on. Okay. And, resolution eighteen forty-eight, would you read that, please?
Resolution eighteen dash forty-eight, establishing garbage refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section five fifty-six dash twenty of the City of Lake Mills municipal code.
I move adoption of resolution eighteen forty-eight.
Second. Okay, have a motion in a second, do we have any further discussion on this? Okay?
Yeah, it's a sixty-five cent increase per unit.
Reasonable, in today's world?
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Now, item E, discussion and decision on request from the Lake Mills Main Street Program to use the community center for the Knickerbocker Festival. And let me get to that item on my thing here. Would you read that motion for us that...
City Council motion eighteen dash twelve dash one dash two, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Main Street Program.
Okay, and I do see Katie Otto in the audience, if anybody wishes to have her come and speak, I'm sure she would be willing to do that. Um, does anybody wish that?
Well, I just have one question which you can nod your head to, is there any real changes?
No, it's the same as it's been the last several years.
We need a motion in a second.
I move motion eighteen dash twelve dash one dash two.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, as part of the discussion, just want to thank the Main Street for their work on that project because it does bring people to Lake Mills. We will pray for the appropriate weather, obviously. Yeah, we, we will have weather, that we will be sure of. What kind of weather will be certainly a question, but hopefully, it'll be good weather for, for your activities. Anybody have any other questions for Katie? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, yeah, one question, is there going to be any, like one previous year, they built Stonehenge, Stone, Icehenge?
That's actually a group separate from ours. And last year, they didn't because it was too warm, so, we're always hopeful.
Yeah, they could try one year on Eiffel Tower or something like that.
So, we'll, we'll see, it's a, they don't associate themselves with the Knickerbocker group, but they do it that weekend, it's gonna be a big one, so, we'll keep our fingers crossed they do it this year.
Okay. Moving on. Item F, resolution eighteen forty-nine, city manager compensation, would you read that for us, please?
Resolution eighteen dash forty-nine, city manager compensation. Resolution eighteen dash forty-nine, city manager compensation.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of resolution eighteen forty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, anybody want to discuss anything in the resolution?
I have a question. In the last paragraph, talks about the half percent bonus and when it's going to be paid. Is that a typo, that it should be paid during twenty nineteen, since we're establishing twenty nineteen's compensation? It was probably just picked up from a previous year.
I assume that, I didn't write it, so.
Yeah, that's my mistake.
So whatever that date would be, and make it twenty nineteen, but I don't know what the pay period is, so. Probably nobody knows, but what the actual payday is and it, maybe just change, maybe we should amend it to be that it's going to be paid December twenty nineteen and not, not be specific about which day because we don't know when the pay periods fall. I move that.
That's what I was just saying.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change it to December?
Twenty nineteen.
Twen, oh, twenty nineteen, no date.
No date.
Right.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, you said, um, make the motion for December twenty nineteen?
Right, without a specific date, you know, whatever, what, you know, it's going to be whatever pay period happens for everybody else. So it's going to sort of run its course with everybody.
Good, okay. And Vicki, you made that motion and?
My.
Thank you.
Good catch on that one, by the way. So, any other discussion on the motion to?
Probably just for clarification for anybody from the public that's interested, this constitutes the same percentage increase in, in compensation as every other city employee.
Right. So we have a motion to amend?
Yes.
But we, can we vote on that?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, now we're back to the original resolution as amended. Any other discussion before we vote on that?
Just as always, this compensation is for multiple jobs.
Oh, that's a good point, yes.
For city manager and for the administrator of the utilities. Is that correct? Is that how we put it?
General manager.
General manager.
Yep.
Otherwise, we'd have to hire two people to do that.
And we keep Steve plenty busy. He, he is not twiddling his thumbs. All right, let's vote on this resolution.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your work, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, item G, resolution eighteen fifty, fund transfer capital budget. Would you, um, read that for us, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, capital budget.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move, uh, resolution eighteen dash fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, who would like to speak to this motion?
You can start.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, there are several projects that were not completed in twenty eighteen that we would like to complete in twenty nineteen. And to do that, we want to show that the funds will be reserved and used in twenty nineteen as those projects are completed. In the resolution, it has a listing of the projects that will be, um, having the funding transferred to be used in the future.
Oops. Um, those projects being parks, walkways, library parking lot, library facility maintenance, miscellaneous street improvements, street signs, sidewalks, Highway eighty-nine, South Main Street, public works equipment, compost study, mill pond study, and South Main Street trees. To, what is that, LGIP?
Local Government Investment Pool.
Okay, to be used for completion of the projects. Okay, just so people who are just listening know what we're, what projects we're moving.
So they will be earning interest, the money will be earning interest.
It, it does, it does.
Yeah, pennies.
Yeah, yeah, with interest rates, they are, but they are coming up and the, the LGIP does pay pretty good.
Okay, any questions or comments?
We did have some debate, does the, using it to pay off debt, they're carrying it over. And, uh, we looked at it today, that interest rates are going up. This money was borrowed at a lot lower rate than we would in the future, so. We'll carry this forward and use it on the projects and maybe we don't have to borrow money again at a higher rate.
Okay. Good point. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Moving right along here. Okay, item H, resolution eighteen fifty-one, fund transfer general fund. Would you read that one for us, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-one, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, general budget.
Okay. If me, can I get a motion for this?
I move adoption of resolution eighteen fifty-one.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Betsy, want to speak to this one?
Sure, this is a similar situation. There were two items in the general fund budget that were not able to be completed this year, and we would like to do those two projects, the cemetery headstone repairs and Sandy Beach boat lift purchase. We'd like to do those in twenty nineteen.
Okay. Any questions for Betsy or Steve? Seeing none, do, call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. And moving on to resolution eighteen fifty-two, would you read that for us, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-two, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to assign unreserved fund balance, capital budget.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
I move adoption of resolution eighteen fifty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, um, this is the, uh, resolution that goes with the earlier, um, earlier motions that we've made to, uh, help the Rock Lake Activity Center so that we can then use that building for future plans. And hopefully this will all work out well. Uh, anybody, Steve, do you want to say anything or are we okay on this?
No, you hit it pretty much on the head. It's, we've already gone through and done the loan program and authorized the loan to the, uh, Rock Lake Activity Center. Uh, this just cleans up the budget to make sure that, uh, we designate how the funds are going to be available for the legal requirements.
Any questions for Steve or Betsy? I'm glad to see that it finally got to us. And, uh, as it was mentioned earlier, I hope they can still do something with the roof. If we continue to miss snowstorms, maybe they'll be able to do that, so. Seeing no other comments or questions, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, great. And moving on to resolution eighteen fifty-three. Would you read that, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-three, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to assign unreserved fund balance, capital budget.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move resolution eighteen dash fifty-three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's discuss this. Now, Betsy, are you the speaker for this or Steve the speaker or Dan the speaker, who's?
No, I, I think I've got it.
You've got it, yay.
The council authorized the purchase of twelve oh four South Main Street earlier this year. And, uh, we acquired that property and are getting ready to actually, um, raise all the buildings on the site. It's the property just north of the bike trail on the east side, just south of Toples. And, uh, we acquired it, looking at it as part of tid number five. And, uh, looking at potential development projects there as it cleans up. So the council authorized that purchase along with the cleanup and the, I guess the, what was it, design of the site? We actually have a site design prepared and ready to go out for developers to look at.
That property includes the old Dairy Queen, right?
No, it does not. That's part of the Topol property to the north. This one was an old lumberyard and I think it had coal and some oil storage at it at one time, but, uh, was a landscaper more recently. I think Jaeger owned it for a while, Forrest owned it for a while. I think before that, there was a guy who sold cars out of there.
So if the weather continues to be without snow, will this be worked on soon or?
No, I anticipate that, wh- what we're going to try and do is schedule for the same time the White Barn goes down.
Okay.
Um, because that's under a demo too, and if he's already doing that one, maybe we could tie them together and get a better deal. So we're trying to.
Okay.
That's, that's why we're kind of hoping to see what happens with the state contract.
Okay, good to know.
So this is the property right across from the, from the car wash?
Yes.
That extends how far back?
Ooh, it's, extends quite a ways, it's about four acres.
Okay.
There's a town property that's been annexed in the back.
So it'll be all the way up to the golf course?
Yeah. Past the golf course.
It bucks the golf course.
Okay.
It's a long, narrow strip. Was it once a driveway?
Well, there's, there's been access on the north, the north side and on the south side of that lot. So there's, yeah, there's at least one driveway, there's multiple.
That's what I was going to say.
It was a lumberyard originally, and then it converted, basically it was tied to the railroad. The railroad actually owned the property and they leased buildings out. And, um, a lumberyard was in there and, like I said, a coal, uh, company and eventually oil and so it's. And then in the sixties, the, I don't know how to say this, apparently, the railroad sold it.
Why do you say apparently?
Well, when we were doing the highway project, it became a property of unknown ownership. So we had to file a thing at the county saying, we, we purchased the right away from someone we don't know.
And just a sliver of it, the north portion, kind of the access. Right now it has, um, big cement blocks and a pyramid blocking, blocking access. There's a portion that has been deemed, um, the, at, at the county level, title hasn't been firmly established in who currently has ownership of it. Multiple, uh, properties probably have access rights through it. The general consensus at this point is that the DNR actually owns it, that they acquired it from the railroad at one point. The DNR has disclaimed any ownership right that they have to it. So we're going to address ownership of that sliver along with that property at an appropriate time.
Always an interesting.
You don't see many portions that are unclaimed at this point, at this point, especially in the City of Lake Mills. So that is interesting.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Moving on. Okay. All right. Item K, resolution eighteen fifty-four, would you read that, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-four, action on notice of claim and claim for damages brought by Patty Danard of seven oh eight West Madison Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay. I need a motion.
I'll move adoption of resolution eighteen fifty-four.
Okay, and I'm on the wrong one. I'm wondering, I have problems, hold on. Hit the wrong button. Okay. Now I'm on the right one. Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, any discussion? Seeing none.
Is the claimant here?
I'm sorry. So. Did you wish to speak to the council? Oh. Do we have a mic that can go over to her?
Well, her son could cer- certainly represent her if that's the option. Yeah, and he can just move up to the mic.
If you suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Would you call the roll? That's okay, take your time. We'll be with you in a minute.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome, good evening. Uh, am I to make a general statement or am I to answer questions?
Could you give your name and address, please?
My name is Damian Danard, eight nine seven East Lake Street, lot one eighteen, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, and before you sit down, we'll need you to sign in on the sheet.
Certainly, certainly, thank you.
You can do that after your turn of speech.
Thank you. Uh, we just, uh, we wanted to make the council aware of some of the issues at bar in the event. We wanted to first, um, just state the event, that there was a storm, that a tree on the terrace level had broke. It had torn an electrical line, a phone line, and a cable line, um, or satellite line. It had also, um, fallen onto a tree that is on our property, broken windows, uh, leaving access to the house, broken slash, a water valve that was on the outside of the house. And, uh, that's about it for the. Yeah, and some, some landscaping, some bushes that were on there. Uh, at the direction of our insurance agent, we immediately, you know, went through our proper channels. Then through some investigation, um, we have a, a neighbor, a Matt Machoud, who claimed to make a formal complaint to the City Parks and Forestry about that tree, saying that it was unhealthy and damaged and needed to come down. I also, uh, there was a Luther Butch Hildebrand, who often picked up my mother, claimed that there was some sort of X or marking on the tree. And I myself called Rob, the, uh, who I believe is the director. And I myself called Rob, who I believe is the director, and he told me at that time that the tree was on the list to be removed, but that it wasn't deemed a priority at the time, and that I was welcome to file a claim with Teresa at the city. I then went and filed a claim to Teresa. First, we brought down the bills, and were then directed that we had to make a formal complaint. So, what I did was, I wrote a formal complaint and emailed it to Teresa. And then, there was some issue that Rob had called, saying that the tree was city property, and that we should not have removed it from the property. But because of the damage that it had caused to our property, it was imperative that the tree be removed as quickly as possible. And then, the claim was denied by a man named Doug, I'm sorry, I do not have his last name, who said that the tree was a healthy tree, and that the city was at no fault. And we're just here to make, I guess, a complaint against that, because, you know, this was very costly for my mother, who's on a fixed income. And, you know, I guess, based on the evidence that, you know, that we have, we feel that it was the terrace tree that was at fault, and therefore, a claim against the city. Which we did, in fact, I'd like to say, we went back and forth on this, you know, whether to file this claim or not. But after these different people, this Matt, who told me this, speaking to Rob on the phone, who invited me to go ahead and do this, and then, this, some other people, that this was a valid claim, so we went ahead and wanted to file it. So, I guess, if anyone, that's our argument. If anyone has any questions or anything for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, now we have two different pieces of information. From what we gathered, Rob said the tree was not on a list to be removed. It was just a tree to be watched. Is that correct?
That's.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just thinking. Yeah, we were told it was marked after the issue happened.
And that couldn't possibly have happened because the city came out. And they were there by two, it was a year late, Monday afternoon, Tuesday, the tree was already taken by us.
Yes, sir.
So, it could have been, because it was taken out.
Well, we were able to gather no evidence of this marking.
That's the question.
You know, due to, we were not able to gather any evidence based, only the evidence based on this testimony from Luther, who is not here to testify on that, so therefore, we can't include that. But the tree was removed very quickly afterwards. And Rob did explain that. He said, he said to me that, you know, the tree, like I said, I, from what I was told, he said it was on a list. Whether it was to, I can't say what exact list it was on. But he said it wasn't a priority, but it certainly will be now. And very quickly, his men were out there to have it removed. And I guess, one of the things that was concerning to me was when Rob called my mother and said that she should not have had that tree removed, due to the fact that that was city property, and that the city should have come out and removed it. And, but, again, if it, I mean, in the email that I drafted, I commended the city for their action on the matter. I mean, there was downed power lines, we have, it was, the fire department, the electrical, you know, the city department of water and light, everyone. They were, they directed us that we had to have repairs made to our house to get the electricity turned on, all that stuff. With our insurance agent, everybody was very, you know, I believe everybody was very effective in handling the situation. I guess there's just now this claim of whether or not, you know, the terrace tree was responsible, or whether or not the city was responsible.
Yeah, and, you know, I think, I'm gonna throw this out there. My interpretation of Rob calling and saying he shouldn't have taken care of the tree or done anything was not an admonishment, or trying to tell you you shouldn't have done that. I think it was more of a long reliance of, they would have come out and taken care of it and saved you the money for her, so you wouldn't have to do it yourself. And that's what I got out of the conversations. So, it wasn't anything.
Sure. Sure, I accept, I accept that, although, although, they, you know, he wouldn't have known that. Like I said, there was a, the spigot that was on the outside of the house had been damaged, so that we had to get access to that spigot to turn the water off. There was broken windows that the tree had to be removed, so we could get those windows replaced. You know, and so, there's things, it had to be removed as quickly as possible, and able to restore the house to a safe condition for my mother, and for, at the time, me and my children who were living there. So.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm not clear. The tree on the terrace split in half?
Yes, what, what I, for the, what I was gathered from the man, from Mycon, the man who removed, the company that removed the tree, he said that there was a knot in the tree, and that the water had filled up the knot, and then it had run through, and that there was a portion of that that had become destabilized, or whatever, and broke off during the storm.
All right, the part of the tree that broke off, fell where?
It fell, well, so, north, or south. So, it would have fallen east into our yard, hitting one of our trees, breaking two big branches off of our two, and then, obviously, cutting the service lines from the telephone pole to our home, and then, landing on the side of our home.
And your what?
Breaking the, yeah. It had landed on the side of the house, breaking the windows on the bay. We had a bay window there where it had broken, and right under that bay window was the water spigot. So.
And that's right, Betsy, when you mentioned about how there was a big hole in the tree, the water was coming down through the inside of the tree. So, the tree was definitely dying, or, yeah, because it was that big of a hole, and it was handled. And my neighbor, he filed a complaint with the city, and Matt Machoud was at it, he was so worried, he'd come over and say to me weekly, "Are we never gonna do something about it here?" Because he was afraid to walk his dog underneath it, because he was also afraid that the branch was gonna come down. And he said, "The branch is gonna come down in a day," and then, eventually, it did. But he did send a complaint to the city long before this happened, so.
I have another.
It's a not helping tree, and it was marked, come down.
I have another question. The one thousand dollars for the cutting and removal of the tree limb, was that for the city tree? Or was that for your tree, or both?
That was for the branch that landed in my bay window.
For that would be the?
No, I'm sorry.
He only took down that branch. The city of Lake Mills took down the tree.
I can, I can just explain that a little bit better. It was for the portion of the terrace tree that had fallen on our yard, and the two branches that had broken off of the other tree. Of what she means is, he only removed the portions that were on our property. He did not remove the remaining tree that was on the terrace. So, yes, part of the cleanup would have been the two parts of the tree that fell from the tree in our yard. And, yeah, we have photos of those, if anyone cares to see. But the tree that broke off would have been a smaller portion.
Did you think of calling the city to remove the tree, remove the limb?
At the time, this all happened, again, because of the necessity to fix these things. We had the fire department there, we had Public Works there, the Power and Light, and we also had our insurance agent, Dave, went there. So, they, we were already trying to get these things working. And Dave had told me to go ahead and call this person. He said, he recommended this person to us. He can get out here quickly, he can get this removed. So, no, at the time, there wasn't any discussion. Again, this is part of the whole going back and forth on whether we were going to file a claim with the city or not. We were just trying to simply restore the house, so we were simply trying to remove the damage and get the damage fixed as quickly as possible. And then, only after further consideration, had we decided to file the claim with the city. So, at the time, no, sir, we, it wasn't part of, I didn't, I wouldn't have considered it, because I thought it would have been, at the time, I thought it was my responsibility.
But you also did have to remove some of the trees on your land.
Correct, yes, yes. In answer to his question, yes, part of the cleanup was the tree that was already in our yard.
If you wanted to say something, Steve.
You know, he talks about Dave and his responsibility, and I think that's what your insurance company's told you is that you should deny it because it was their responsibility, and they needed to have their insurance company pick it up. And I, so I, I think that's the approach that we need to look at it here. That's the one we've always taken, when we look at these. And claiming that a tree is, you know what a tree is, is not. I've seen, I've seen trees, well, we had one over in the park that was full of concrete, that lasted for years. We've had trees that were hollow, that lasted for fifty years. So, the debate is, is, was that tree, or was that not? Well, it's on a watch list, but it wasn't deemed ready to take down. There's debate on all the other issues. Our insurance company has made a recommendation to us, and I believe that they have evaluated it from the position that's consistent with what we've historically done. And I don't, I don't know why we would change from that. If our insurance company told us to pay, I mean, they would have paid it.
Is there any way, can I, obviously, like I said, I cannot bring this Luther Butch Hildebrand in front of the city council, but is there any way to verify that the complaint from this Matt Machoud was made to the city about the tree? Can we verify that part, at least?
Well, I don't, I don't know, you know, if that was, had you told the, Mr. Doug, the Doug from the insurance company that information?
I did not speak to him on the phone, I'm sorry, I'm just speaking for her.
Then you told him that? Then he would have gone through and verified that information. And if that had come through to Rob, he would have gone out and made a decision on whether the tree was viable or not. So, from the standpoint of a licensed arborist making a judgment call on a public right-of-way tree, I think that the insurance company is gonna go with Rob's decision, and stand behind that one. I'm thinking they're willing to go to court on the issue. And from that standpoint, I guess they know what their responsibilities are, and ours.
So, do we have any further questions for? Anybody at this point, otherwise? Call a question? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So, we appreciate you coming, although we feel that we've made the decision we have to make in this case. Sorry that it isn't the one that you were hoping for.
Yeah, the claim is disallowed by the city, meaning that you have a reduced statute of limitations period to bring a formal lawsuit against the city if you'd like to claim damages.
That'll be explained in a notice that you're gonna send out, right?
Correct, it's in the resolution.
Okay.
Well, we would certainly like to thank the council for taking this consideration seriously, and thank you very much for your time.
Sorry. Okay, moving to item L, Resolution eighteen fifty-five. Mr. Drescher, I have a question on this.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that the parties that be on this item have asked for a, for it to be tabled?
I spoke with the claimant, Gwen Perner King, on Friday afternoon, and she requested the ability to submit more information to the city, connecting the damage that she incurred to her water heater, to the actual event that the city caused breaking the gas line.
So, should we pass?
We have enough time right now. We're not under the, we're not close to the one hundred twenty-day requirement regarding formally disallowing or allowing the claim. So, my suggestion to her was to request that it be tabled at this meeting, and then, addressed at a future agenda, so that she would have a little bit more time to submit some information.
Do we need to make a motion on the resolution and then table it?
Well, yeah, that's the appropriate route. You could, you could just make a motion right now to table the item.
Without making the motion?
Either way, whatever motion you make first is the one on the table.
Well, I think since they requested more time, we could certainly do that. Someone wanna make a motion to table this item?
I'll make a motion to table item, yeah, Resolution eighteen fifty-five.
I'll second that.
And that's an open-ended tabling, right? Will be brought back at the appropriate time?
We do have a limited amount of time, about sixty days from today.
But I mean, we don't wanna do it at the next meeting, because we don't know if we'll have everything by then?
I did tell her to submit by the end of this week, so that we could be prepared for the second meeting in December. However, we would have time to get to the second meeting in January, still honor the one hundred twenty-day period.
So, we won't put a timeline on the table, but the idea is to do it as soon as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, would you call the roll on the table, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, so that will be brought back to the council as soon as we get the information. M, Resolution eighteen fifty-five, preliminary plat approval for Brookstone Meadows subdivision.
Fifty-six?
Yes.
Is that the right?
Fifty-six. Oh, I said it wrong. Fifty-six, thank you. Would you read that motion, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-six, preliminary plat approval, Brookstone Meadows subdivision, phases six through ten.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we table Resolution eighteen fifty-six, so the plan, or the Public Works Board can review it at their next meeting?
I would ask that you not, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it this way. First, it's a preliminary plat, not a final plat. And generally, you don't get much with the construction plans at a preliminary plat stage, they're generally a final plat stage. Second of all, this plat isn't the first time we've seen it, we've seen it before. And we're on a tight timeline to get bid early, so that we get decent bids. And it is on the next Public Works Board agenda for the complete plans, which would be consistent with the final plat.
Okay, I had understood it was gonna be the preliminary plat at the next week at Public Works Board, but if it's gonna be the final plat, then I withdraw my motion.
We're actually doing the construction plans for the whole phase. In fact, when it comes out, it's gonna be the two thousand and nineteen construction plan. So, it's gonna have American Way West, it's gonna have all of the construction plans in Brookstone plat, and it's gonna have CP Avenue, and then, it's gonna have a sanitary sewer run for a lot in the industrial park, so.
Yeah, the main reason I was concerned was, I checked again with the Public Works Board ordinance, and they're supposed to, at the preliminary plat stage, talk about placement of streets, that once the preliminary plat is approved, you can't move the streets. But streets are kinda already established where they're gonna be, so I can see that we can bypass the preliminary.
So I can see that we can bypass the preliminary plat for the pu- public works board. And their more crucial thing is the construction plans, so I withdraw my motion to table. Okay. Now I've lost track, do we have a motion for this?
No.
Okay. So I'll request a motion for resolution eighteen fifty-six.
I will move adoption of resolution eighteen fifty-six.
Second. Okay, discussion at this point.
So, well, we went through this at the plan commission. We only had one dissenter on the vote to move this forward. And I think that was keyed around setting up, uh, American Way as a, uh, no truck route or a truck route. The only reason that it passed without that is because it looks like we're going to be pushing off connection with Harvey Road for like eight to ten years. So there really shouldn't be any trucks or anything going through there until possibly eight to ten years once the final phases are completed. So we didn't see it as a big, a big issue right now.
Yeah, we, the motion says that, um, we're going to continue to review the, uh, no trucks. And I think that's why he voted against it. I think he wanted that to be open to trucks, but I can't guarantee that.
Right.
Uh, because there wasn't any discussion about the no vote. But it's kind of irrelevant at this point in time because we can look at it. The discussion wrapped around the fact that when we do our strong towns stuff and our transportation plan, they all said that this would be a truck route. So all city policy says this would be a truck route. It does run through a residential neighborhood. But so do a, almost every single truck route in the city runs through a residential neighborhood. The biggest problem for us is, is that there aren't going to be any more significant connections further south because of all the wetlands and the bike trail. So we're only going to have two main routes on the east side that are going to be able to connect east to west somewhat. And we don't want to end up with like, right now, where the only south road is Highway eighty-nine. And so that was the debate. But we also acknowledge that, hey, we don't have to worry about it for a number of years yet, so.
So will it or will it not be a truck route?
Uh, all the plan commission said was is to review it and see if it needed to be a truck route or not. Um, I, I think they wanted us to look at it and say, uh, there are enough other options for truck routes. And while, you know, emergency vehicles and cars could use it, maybe it doesn't need to be a truck route, a primary truck route. Uh, so those are the, those are the discussions that can be had in the next several years when we're looking at finishing up that road. To a certain extent, having that amount of time gives us some time to see what the issues are and continue to be, um, you know, if CP Avenue pushed through for some reason, um...
Even if CP Avenue pushed through, you know, we talked about that also.
That's a north-south.
That's not an east, east-west route. So those trucks would still either end up out on East Lake or they would take this new route. So it could actually benefit these roads overall if you split that load between the, the different roads.
Well, the small, the strong towns concept was is, instead of forcing every single truck to one road, that makes that road hard to cross.
Yep.
Uh, and we are trying to be as pedestrian-friendly as possible. So if you have a split up on them, it makes it a, an easier road for pedestrians to navigate. Obviously, the advantage for American Way would be if there's no trucks allowed, they get the best option. Whereas Lake Street then carries every single truck that's moving through the city on the east side.
Is American Way all the way to Harvey Road, is it the same width as the American Way that exists now?
Um, well, that's, American Way in the industrial park is forty-four feet back a curb to back a curb. And the American Way in Brookstone, which is several blocks long, is forty-one feet back a curb to back a curb. So we are bet- we are building it to forty-one feet, not forty-four, we're going with a narrower one. Um, that being said, almost every single truck route in the city is thirty-eight feet.
So it's still wider?
Yeah, it's, and it's not going to have any driveways on it. I mean, it's going to be designed to be a through street. Now, I, I agree with Dustin, there need to be some stop signs on it. Um, but I don't know that. At some point in time, it may not be in the near future, but at some point in time, you're going to want to make that a truck route, I, I believe. But I also don't think our industrial park there is significant enough that there are going to be a lot of trucks moving in and out of that industrial park.
No.
I would agree with that, so.
Will the pavement be thick enough to handle the trucks?
Yeah, it's designed for a full, it's designed as a arterial street. Uh, so we have designations for our streets, local collector and arterial. And each one has a design pattern for it based on that. And it, it ties together with truck traffic and the number of cars. So a collector, if you have two collectors in that distance, that's not a bad option. One is, is problematic.
Definitely.
So those, those kinds of discussions are, can be had and hashed out. I think, you know, we can do some evaluation. I just, I, you know, there's no sidewalk out in that area yet. Uh, there will be along American Way in Brookstone. And then there's a, uh, eight-foot bike trail that runs all the way along the north side of American Way to the bike trail, to the spur at CP Avenue. That's all part of this design plan. And, uh, so there, there is options for more, um, pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic to move up and down this route, back and forth through the city. So it actually makes a full connection. You can hit the spur right down to the bike trail, the Glacial Drum, and come right over to Main Street and back up. Or you got the spur now that goes all the way down to St. Paul's. And you can, you can move across the city pretty easily on a bike trail at, at this point from east to west as, as part of this concept. But Ameri- uh, Brookstone from East Mills Drive, east out does not have any, on Lake Street does not have any sidewalks yet.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second, right? Okay. Any further discussion? We're okay with that, I think. Call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And we'll continue on that and go to item N, resolution eighteen fifty-seven. Contract for county library services, would you read that resolution, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fifty-seven, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Jefferson Coney.
Do I have a motion? I move adoption of resolution eighteen fifty-seven.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
This is kind of housekeeping?
Yes, we receive this every so many years, um, goes through the library board, then they send it over for a municipal signature. I don't think historically we might have brought this to the council for signature.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it.
Um, but, uh, the way the new county resolution was, or con- agreement was formed, I thought maybe I'd, I'd bring it for signature, for authorization as signature.
That's probably a good thing you did.
Generally, the library board approves it, I look at it and say, yeah, they have the authority to do that. But in this case, I thought, it's not quite the same as the old contracts I've seen.
Were there any big changes?
No, it's just that they were looking more for a, a municipal agreement that said that the city was actually part of the contract.
I see that on the, on the signature page, the... All right, any further discussion, unless we can vote on this?
I'm just kind of curious how this really affects us overall, other than...
It affects us by shipping us a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, are they giving us money for this?
Yes, basically what they do is, is they, they have a county library board. And as part of us being servicing in the, through the county system, uh, they provide money.
Okay, good.
So if you look at the budget, there's a line item, county payment for library services.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I just was looking at it and I was trying to figure out who's getting that money, where is that going?
It goes right into our general fund, which then goes to the library.
Right.
Now, if I'm reading this right, mine says a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifteen, that is accurate, okay. All right, I guess we will not refuse the money.
I hope, I hope not.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
What's that, Mrs. Fritsch?
Yes, I'm sorry, aye.
Okay. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, that takes us to item number nine. Would you read that, please?
Convening to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the investment of public funds in negotiation of lease terms whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Okay, we need a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Okay, just as a matter of discussion, uh, when we are done with our closed session, we will be reconvening and coming back to this room. But we, and we will also have...
Video?
Yeah, uh, we will be on...
Taking action.
Video, right, okay. And then we will, um, decide item eleven, which is the award of the share-ride taxi service contract. So, um, vote?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, so we will reconvene in closed session and we will come back here when we're done. We, we don't need a motion to reconvene, do we?
We did that in closed sessions and now...
So we're all set to go?
Yep.
Let's... So, uh, we're, item ten, to reconvene into open session. Uh, moving to item eleven, discussion decision on award of a share-ride taxi service contract. Would you read that motion, please?
City council motion eighteen dash twelve dash one dash three, authorizing staff to issue the notice of intent to award and execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Brown Cab Service, Inc.
Okay, um...
I will make a motion of adoption of motion eighteen twelve, one, three.
Okay. Second. A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Um, we just finished closed session where we did discussion, but, um, does anybody want to say anything in open session? I think we all feel this, this is an important service
Yeah.
in our city. Ridership is pretty good.
It's up.
You know, and... Hmm?
Increased.
Yeah.
Well, over eight thousand rides this last year.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, you know, as things become more expensive, it's hard to own a car when you don't have a lot of money. So, um, this is a good service to have. Anybody else have any comments before we vote? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, so we are going to keep our city cap. Yay! And moving on to item number twelve, uh, recommendation for future agendas. Does anybody have something they want added at this time? At our second meeting in December, in December, um, we do have several items already on that agenda. Is there anything of, that we should know is coming down the road? Well, Steve had mentioned that we need to start thinking about doing the branding. And I looked ahead on the calendar, and even though we aren't going to meet the first Tuesday in January, there is a fifth Tuesday that maybe we could have our work session to do the branding on the fifth Tuesday, if that works for everybody. See a head over there, it looked good?
Well, that was kind of the date we were shooting for.
Okay, so...
Fifth Tuesday?
It's the, the fifth Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, I think it's something like the twenty, is it the twenty-eighth? I don't think I have a January calendar yet, so I can't hope you on that one, but... It's the twenty-ninth. Mm-hmm. We don't have other plans for that night yet, do we, for any other...
No, we're, we're available.
Okay, so would that be a work session?
Yes.
Okay. Would that also be, if we needed some more work session time on Sandy Beach, could that also be combined on that?
Um... I think the branding is probably going to take up a good portion.
Yeah, I'm going to think the branding will take up a good portion, will be the meeting. If we can get, if we can beat out fifty percent of what we need to do on that night, we'll be, I'll be pretty happy.
Okay.
I know that we're, we're going to look if we can get down to a relatively thin list of options on that evening. We'll look at a, kind of a community-wide meeting where they can review and then kind of make comments. And then we'll come back and finalize it and hopefully be done near the middle of, the end of February, the middle of March.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, so we have that then, and, um, so anything else that we want to add to future agenda? And we, uh, still can, otherwise...
Do you want to talk about the eighteenth, whether we're doing a work session or a session?
Have we, have we decided whether we're doing the, a regular meeting? I assume we're, we're having a regular meeting anyway.
I think we have to, don't we, for some business we have to do?
We're going to have a regular meeting for business we have to do anyways. We, but we just keep the meeting open for the Sandy Beach instead of stopping and going into executive session?
Yeah, um, is that fine? Yep, that would be, okay, so we'll just put it on the regular agenda, is what you're saying? And, uh, and then it'll be, it'll be a recorded
Yep.
session, which I don't have a problem with at this point. What's that, if, I think, sounds like that's fine. Okay, so we'll put Sandy Beach at the end of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so that it can go as long as we feel we can function forever and ever, no, no, okay. So, meeting adjourned.